Hi, Councilor Perkins.
Hi. Just wanted to let you know that I'm gonna have to be off camera for about 20 minutes today. I have an unexpected kid pickup.
Got it. Thank you. So we're just waiting for Cassie and Anna. They should be on shortly. There's Cassie. Hi, Cassie.
It makes sense. We have a pretty full agenda. Why don't we go ahead and get started because both Anna and Cassie are kind of later on in the agenda. So I can just kick things off and the agenda is posted online, but the the first item is just the approval of the minute. So I'll just look for a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Move to approve.
The second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the the next item is a follow up from our previous meeting, and that's the American Rescue Plan Act Community Assistance Grant Program. So just to recap, you made the decision to fund, put a prioritization towards those organizations that are serving our houseless population, but we're interested in funding the remaining applications which amounts to about 240,000. And so we're here to provide you with some recommendations and next steps of how to fund those if you so choose to. So and there's a lot of information that was included in your packet, including the detailed applications. But I'll turn it over to Nikki to walk through a really brief kind of slide deck just to kind of reorient it as to where we're at, where we are. And then I will be looking for some direction from this group.
All right, great. I'm sharing my screen right now. So we're back with the American Rescue Plan Act Community Assistance Grant Program. As a recap, last month you awarded five nonprofit organizations they requested and you funded them 100%. It was awarded to the priority recipients that you deemed were priority, the direct houseless service providers. And H R E C also provided input to create them as the priority recipients. And the awardees were within the $200,000 budget. If you can recall, back in November, City Council approved the 200,000 ARPA budget for this program and authorized the city manager to award it, enter into contract. So we're in that process right now of entering into contract and funding these five nonprofit organizations. Today, we're asking for your direction regarding the remaining applicants that were 240,000 beyond the 200,000 budget. And we'd like to hear from you whether you'd like to award any or all of these applicants in at 100% or scaled down amounts. And I'll come back to the summary slide. You were waiting for information regarding the HB 5202, which passed. And 25 million out of that $400 million package is going towards local government for houselessness efforts. 1.5 million is going to Bend for housing shelter services. 400K is going for trash and sanitation. And then we also have $1.2 million of ARPA Reserve Fund that we have access to. And thanks to Carolyn Egan, she's on the call today. She can answer any questions she might have regarding this information on this slide. Just as a refresher for all of us and also for those who are just tuning in for the first time, the purpose of the Community Assistance Grant is to assist qualifying nonprofit organizations to recover from COVID and to assist them with providing services to those negatively impacted, especially those disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. The application process is the same as last time, except for this time, we're gonna have to go back. If you do decide to award any of these applicants, we'll have to go back to City Council for approval again. And the Treasury guideline is to identify if they were, if any of these applicants were negatively impacted. Make sure that they have a response that addresses or response to the impact. And that's related to the harm and that it's designed to benefit the impacted parties. Staff previewed the applications and prescreened it, asked the questions, were they negatively impacted and are they nonprofits? If yes, they moved on to the next step. We looked at if they're gonna be applying, what they're gonna be using the funding for, is it eligible? And then we scored it. Staff scored it based on these criterias, impact and eligible use, were, you know, who are the beneficiaries? And are they within the rules of the US Department Treasury? And then looked at funding and budget. And we ranked the scores based on the responses. And again, going back to the summary. Sorry, let me minimize this screen that's in the way. Summary of remaining applicants, you'll see here the total scoring from staff. We had three different staff members score it, the auditor, somebody from legal department, somebody from the city manager's office. And it includes in this summary, the amount requested and what they will be using this money for. And again, we're looking to you to give us direction on whether you want to award any of these remaining applicants. And at what percentage, 100% or scaled down? And that concludes my presentation. And we have the team here again. That's Shelley Smith from the city manager's office. And Michael Selkirk from legal department, Tracy from the auditor and myself. And I don't think Ben Hemson is here yet. Do you have any questions?
Nikki, do you mind just stop sharing your screen? Thank you. And so just, and you might have covered this, but I missed it, but the we don't need to do a formal budget adjustment, but we will most likely just need a council, the full council, because you are only authorized as a subcommittee to allocate the 200,000. So anything beyond that would need to go to the full council. And I don't know if somebody from legal can, we, I don't know if it'll be a motion or it'll be a resolution at a future meeting. But it's a more simple process than I think what we, when we had talked to you a few weeks ago, we thought this would need to be included in a big with the public notice and all that with the supplemental budget. It looks like we do need full council approval, but it's in the, in either the form of just a motion or a maybe a resolution.
So Eric, this would come out of the ARPA Reserve?
Correct.
Okay.
And so if we didn't spend this, then it would stay in the ARPA Reserve for ARPA purposes.
Correct.
And is there, this could, I just don't recall, did we contemplate in our second round of the ARPA dollars doing this again with nonprofits?
No, we did not. You know, and I would say we're not best, we're not very well positioned to be a direct funder. I think it works better. Frankly, if we find another organization like we did the treatment with the CARES funding where we relied on organizations like the Chamber or COIC or others to to get money out directly to organizations or businesses. So I would not recommend trying to repeat this process moving forward.
For, for Jenna and Megan, I mean, do you have a approach that you think makes sense with this in terms of either pro-rata reduction, doing everything, or picking the highest scoring? I mean, do you, do you have a direction that you think is most appropriate?
Go ahead, Jenna.
Well, I was deferring to you because I I thought you had strong feelings about it. I, I mean, it's relatively small in terms of the amount that we have left, but I also don't want to kind of eat away at other funds that we might use for more immediate needs, like, you know, shelter operations. Even though we see that there are more funds coming for that. I'm kind of inclined to to fund 100% of a request, but at a, but a reduced number of groups. And prioritize slightly on this list. I don't think we necessarily need to go with just the highest scoring, although we could. So that that's kind of the approach I have in mind.
That's where I was headed as well.
Okay.
What about you, Anthony?
Yeah, that sounds good. I mean, I would pick the top couple here or top ones that make sense for what, you know.
Nikki, would you mind resharing your screen and we can put that slide back up that has the applicants and their ranking and their requests? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if if we're thinking we're going to move forward with any funding at all, I would just do the hot, well, Boys and Girls Club scored the highest out of the highest possible. I would do that. And then the Kid Center. And I think after that, you know, maybe direct people to other areas of funding.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing.
Yeah, the only other one I would consider including, I need to take a look again at their application though, is Saving Grace. Because of just the relation of domestic violence to homelessness.
Yep.
And wanting to make sure that we're kind of providing a little bit more holistic support in the community. That's what I'm thinking. Kind of looking at the different causes of housing insecurity and making sure we're kind of, we're hitting all of those.
So I heard agreement for Boys and Girls Club and Kid Center. Do do others, based on what Jenna just suggested, do you, do you want to include Saving Grace in that? In this next tranche of funding? Or is that something you'd want to table and revisit?
It was standing out to me too, Jenna. So I'm in favor of that.
It sounds good to me.
Okay.
I, I think that leaves some, that leaves enough in the reserves that we're not using on this that
Yeah.
makes me more comfortable for our core ARPA function.
Yeah.
Yeah, it leaves over a million in the reserves, so.
Right. All right. So we'll take that direction. And as I said, I don't, Michael isn't on the call. Or if there's anybody else from legal, I think we'll just need either a motion or it might be a resolution at a, the, the next school council meeting to execute that decision, but we'll move forward with that direction.
Okay.
Actually, Michael's on the call, but yeah.
Yeah, just joined. We'll, we'll do an amended resolution to increase the funding.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks.
All right, I think we are ready to move on to the next item. And that is the neighborhood assessment. So you heard from Zavi, the last stewardship subcommittee on the work that we're doing to build relationships and really do be much more intentional about reaching underrepresented communities. We are also, as part of the council goals, engaged in work and assessing the effectiveness of the neighborhood system. So Michaela is in, most of these, these projects are somewhat linked. So we wanted to make sure this subcommittee also heard kind of the preliminary work that's been completed to date from, from that assessment. So I'm going to turn this over to Michaela Oliver.
Thank you, Eric. Hello, councilors. Happy Monday. I am here today to talk to you a little bit about the neighborhood assessment that I have been working on. You heard from Zavi, as Eric said, last, last month, who's been working on the city's outreach strategy and structure. I think both of these assessments are in tangent with one another. And Zavi and I hope to partner on a lot of the, the strategies and development of a plan after we've collected all of these inputs. So today I wanted to give you an update on what I have found so far. So as a reminder, this is the accessible and effective city government goal with the strategy to assess the neighborhood association system. And I'll start out with our methodology. So I had the privilege of joining 12 other folks from the city of Bend in participating in the Bloomberg Philanthropies Innovation Training last year. It was a nine-month program that allowed us to look into human-centered design and how we use that focus within programs, policies, and projects that we're working on in government. And so here on the board, you actually see the entire path to innovation. The assessment that I'm doing actually falls under this first bubble.
I'm not seeing this.
Moving.
Oh, no. Okay. Thanks for coming out. So here's the last slide that I mentioned, and then the assessment methodology. So much better, I hope. This one is the Bloomberg methodology. And so I'm using a luciteration of this. The assessment, as I mentioned, is really under that first pink red bubble, which is understanding the problem. Council will have an opportunity to consider options for maybe looking into continuing down the path to innovation as we consider the Neighborhood Association program and want to work on improving its effectiveness for our community. But as I mentioned, today we're talking about the assessment. So this is the understand the problem phase. And I am currently in the process of making sense of the data. So I'm about three or four months in of neighborhood board conversations, community surveys, and all kinds of inputs that we've been gathering. I haven't quite had a chance to sift through all of it and analyze it. But I can give you our top findings for today. So to start out with human-centered design, the first process, oops, I need to change it again. There we go. So in order to embark on human, human-centered design, we first need to identify a problem to investigate. And using the council goals language, I was able to deduce that we have a problem with representation in our neighborhood associations. So what is the problem? Neighborhood associations struggle to engage and accurately represent their members. Why is it a problem and who is it a problem for? Our volunteer neighborhood boards are called to be representative of their members when advocating on their behalf to decision makers. We have traditionally underrepresented groups who are remaining underrepresented. City decision makers and elected officials, as yourselves, rely on NA input as being representative of the community when there are actually gaps and who's being reached. And taxpayer dollars are funding organizations that maybe aren't truly representative of their members. So using that problem statement, I was able to dive into a program review. And with this program review, I really was looking at all of the items that we have already, the compliance forms, the communications grant funding, program history, everything that we know to date about the Neighborhood Association program. And what this program review told me was that there's, there's a lot of info regarding attendance and where funding is being spent. But it helped me really to identify where, who the stakeholders are in this project. Human-centered design is very public participation focused, people focused, and focusing on the people who are impacted by our projects the most. So a lot of involvement there. With that, we identified several inputs that we wanted to include. And this is to make sure that we're getting a very holistic view of the Neighborhood Association system. We're asking the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance, which gives us that citywide neighborhood perspective. And they're also advising me as I go along through these process. The Neighborhood Association boards, so going out to all 13 boards and talking to them about what barriers are that they're experiencing. What they think would make reaching out and being more representative easier, and so on. We want to ask the general community what they think about our neighborhood associations, whether they've ever heard of them or not. So talking to the folks that maybe aren't engaged in figuring out why. But also, we can talk to Neighborhood Association members and make sure that the system is representing them accurately. We also have city of Bend council and staff input, so why I'm here today. And then I mentioned earlier, Zavi's assessment, which is the city's outreach strategy and structure. He's already working with our Spanish-speaking organizations and underrepresented groups. And we hope that what he's learning from that assessment can play into the plan coming out of this neighborhood assessment. Because it is a very public-facing project, I have tried to bring the Neighborhood Associations along with me throughout this process. So in front of you, this slide is busy, but it is the flow chart. We are currently on step five, which is right in the center. And meaning we've collected all these great inputs and now we are at the point where we're bringing them back and trying to make sense of it all. I will mention before I go into the findings of some of these steps that we wanted to ensure that all of the Neighborhood Associations were on the same page when it came to diversity, equity, and inclusion practices. And so we worked with the Equity of, or Office of Equity and set up a training for neighborhood leaders with OSU Cascades DEI Lab. We held one training in December where 40, 40 members from Neighborhood Association boards participated. And all of the Neighborhood Associations were present. And so we did that before we embarked on some of these more one-on-one conversations with myself about barriers and, and successes and opportunities. So findings to date. We started off with a communication survey last fall. And this is a communication survey that we have done in the past. It was created by the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance. It is created to talk or find, figure out what communications preferences are among Neighborhood Association members. But also to weight the level of trust with Neighborhood Associations as well as the city. So this was a baseline metric that we just wanted to recollect before we started this process. And it was pushed out by Neighborhood Associations as well as the city. And there were 496 responses. 61% of those respondents do not feel engaged with their Neighborhood Associations. That's up from 58% in 2019. I'm sure COVID plays a factor in that. Email, social media, and mail are the most preferred methods. That was no change from 2019. We did see comments that point towards confusion about what the purpose of a Neighborhood Association is. So there were some comments that maybe suggested the respondent thought that they were homeowners association. And there were some comments that suggested maybe they thought they were a part of the city. And 47% of the respondents were neutral towards Neighborhood Associations. They didn't feel either a little or a lot of trust. And then 35% of respondents expressed a little trust in the city of Bend. And I will note that in 2019, there was a 36% neutral as far as trust goes with the city of Bend. And so that has shifted into, from the neutral realm to a little trust, which is down the scale. During that time that we were collecting those responses, I also met with the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance. At the request of Mayor Russell, the committee was asked to focus on recruitment and engagement in October. That was because we were seeing a huge turnover in the Neighborhood Association boards, as well as the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance. And so we wanted to make sure that we were focused on helping the Neighborhood Association Board strengthen before we went into this assessment. So during the October meeting, I met with the, facilitated a brainstorming exercise with the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance. And was able to take the comments about barriers to success, successes that they had used. Or what had worked for some Neighborhood Associations in recruiting new members. And then talking about opportunities, like what are some ways you want the city to support you? What have you seen work in other cities? And what ways do you want to collaborate with other NAs? From that discussion, I was able to theme a lot of the responses into five key areas. In human-centered design, those are called assumptions, because we don't know if they're true or not. And so it was a way of seeing how the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance aligned with the Neighborhood Associations. So once we had come up with those themes, we developed a survey that went out to all of the Neighborhood Association board members. And we asked the, the board members to rate those themes and how well they applied to them. I see my slides aren't moving again. I apologize for the technical glitch. So this is the, the theming of the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance. And then here I am on assumed barriers. So this is the, the quiz, the kind of quiz for neighborhood board members that I had sent out. And again, this was a way of testing what the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance had told. Had, had let me know just to make sure that we were in line with some of our Neighborhood Associations. But also to dive in and, and see what else are neighborhoods dealing with, or is, are these really the issues at the top, top of mind? So a one on the scale is does not apply and five is definitely applies. There are five assumptions. So the first was that diversity, equity, and inclusion are buzzwords that cause confusion and fear for NAs, especially leading into the council goals assessment. Of that, this was the lowest of all of the Neighborhood Associations telling me that that's not necessarily an issue that they see with 2.2% average, or sorry, 2.2 as the average response between all of the board. Assumption two, neighborhoods feel like council does not value the role of Neighborhood Associations. The council needs to support and promote neighborhoods as a valued tool to engage the community. This was a 3.5 among all of the boards. Assumption three was people don't know what a Neighborhood Association is. So very simple, 3.9, that was well agreed with. Assumption four was board turnover is an issue for most days, NAs with constant turnover. It's hard to, to keep, keep keeping on. And that was a 3.8. And then assumption number five was Neighborhood Associations are written into code with land uses being a main purpose and focus. And that was an average of 3.0. So this was again, just a way to see how the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance aligned with the neighborhoods. And it also opened up good conversations for those neighborhood discussions, which is next. So before each of these discussions, I did have their boards fill out that assumption survey. And then we talked about what was found in those. We also went through the five questions that you see on the, the slide in front of you. And what are barriers to engagement with your Neighborhood Association? What has the Neighborhood Association done to encourage representation or diverse representation? What has been your biggest ongoing challenge? What kind of opportunities do you think could support these concerns? And should communications funding be different? I have one more board to go, but I can give you the top highlights from the conversations that I've already had. Most neighborhood associations are agreeing that COVID has been a huge limiting factor in receiving input from members. The majority of boards want to be able to use community or funding for community building activities and not be limited to communications. The majority of NA boards don't have board members that have communications, web, or social media skills. The majority of NA boards have an interest in shared technology and communications resources. And then the majority of NA boards find data, the city's data in particular, mailing lists, service requests, demographics, to be limiting in their ability to reach their members. And the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance also asked for funding to do a neighborhood-specific survey. So we were able to provide $10,000 to do a statistically valid survey. This survey was on behalf of the city of Bend, done by Embold Research. And they surveyed 544 adults in Bend from the 14th to the 18th about neighborhoods. And that was included in your packet, a memo of the results. And we'll go through that. The survey goals were to obtain a sense of how Bend residents perceived the Neighborhood Associations as a conduit of information and representation. Gain a better understanding of the effectiveness of the current neighborhood system and identify what barriers are to Neighborhood Association engagement. This was a new way of doing surveying for the city. It was conducted using an unbranded approach. We did not push out the survey. We did not have Neighborhood Associations push out the survey. All outreach was done by Embold and the respondents were recruited via dynamic sampling, which was all digital, all online sampling. So meeting people where they were at with the technology that they were already using. And it was also made to be reflected based on the population. So they used census data to determine, to make sure that we had a representative sample in that 544 adults. Okay, so there's just three slides, three takeaways from the data right now that I want to share with you. On the screen is the Neighborhood Association favorability scale. On the left, just to orient you with the graph, is the orange, which is very favorable. And on the right is the navy blue, which is very unfavorable. You can see all of the demographics that were surveyed with this. About half of the respondents, 52%, are either unfamiliar or neutral towards Neighborhood Associations. Of those who offered an opinion, they were split 23% favorable and 24% unfavorable. Voters over 65 have the most positive views and unsurprisingly, residents under 50 and renters are least familiar with Neighborhood Associations. Another testing aspect that we went into was what do Neighborhood Associations do and what should Neighborhood Associations do? So when asked about the respondent's understanding of Neighborhood Associations and what they do, 26% were unsure. The most selected answer was that the associations let neighbors voice their community concerns, like new developments in the area, land use, and city policies. That was at 41%. There's also a top answer for what neighborhoods should do at, sorry, this is also the answer of what they should do at 62%. A 53% majority believe Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Associations should represent its members' views to decision makers, which is the second most selected option. And interestingly, a sizable 43% believe Neighborhood Associations should also prevent unwanted development from occurring in the neighborhood. And interestingly, a sizable forty-three percent believe neighborhood associations should also prevent unwanted development from occurring in the neighborhood. And then the last takeaway from the community survey right now is the agreement statement. So we had this agreements matrix where we asked people to tell us how strongly they agree, which is that orange on the left-hand side. And then how strongly they disagree, which is the navy blue on the right-hand side. So a few residents, very few residents agree that their neighborhood associations make an effort to collect their opinion on important community topics. That was twenty percent. And they sixteen percent believe that they actually include views from all of their members when communicating with decision-makers. And then only eighteen percent of respondents say that decision-makers and city government actually listen to the views shared by neighborhood associations. So those sizable portions were unsure about each of the statements that you see in front of you. And the negative message about neighborhood associations only protecting homeowners. And was the most agreed with at thirty-one percent, driven by those under thirty-five renters, low-income households, and newer residents. Additionally, I think it's important to point out that about a quarter of respondents have accessed their neighborhood association's website. Seen information on social media about the neighborhood association and/or registered with their association to be communicated with. And only a slightly smaller eighteen percent have actually attended a meeting. So next steps. And so right now I'm in the process of making sense of all the data as I had mentioned. And this is technically on the, the really graphical slide, step six through ten. And so this is where we're taking the information that we've learned and trying to make sense of it by identifying barriers that were themed within those responses. And developing strategies to overcome those barriers. Sharing those strategies with the big key stakeholders. And then refining strategies, potentially identifying low-hanging fruit that we could accomplish with the resources that we already have. But also looking towards a bigger project that might need additional resources in the future. And we do plan, I plan to work with the Office of Equity, Anna Allen and her group. And then also Zavi, as we're going through these to develop strategies and that are equitable. Also, I'm offering to share those, those strategies with the Human Rights and Equity Commission as much as they want to be involved. And then finally, I did want you to have access to the Miro Board. So I put the link in the slides, I also put it in the outreach that we did the other day. And you should be able to see the Miro Board in front of you now. This is where all of the assessment details have been stored. So if you really want to dive in and watch the meetings and the conversations and see what neighborhood boards are saying, you're welcome to do all of that. And but I will be back to give you an update when we have been, had a chance to make sense of the data. And with that, I just want to ask, are there questions? Am I, am I missing anything in this assessment? And I want to make sure that I'm doing this holistically and I value your input.
Michaela, can you, the first survey you talked about? Can you remind me that was done? How, by email or?
Yeah, so the first survey is one that has been done in the past, in two thousand and nineteen. This time it is, it was pushed out via all of the city's communications platforms. And as well as the neighborhood associations sharing those on what.
Okay, and then the, the bold one, that, that was the one that was not shared because yet you wanted to get sort of different, okay.
Yeah. And what I thought was interesting about that was the, the Embold survey actually echoed that. A couple of the same data points as our communication survey.
So as Michaela says, we're, we're just kind of midstream here, looking to make sure that we're on the right track. Looking if there's something that you're curious about, want to know more, that can help inform some of our other next steps. Please do share those, share this, but this is not, we're not looking for any specific direction right now, or decision right now. This is just more of a, of an update.
I was just gonna say. Go ahead, Anthony.
Good.
Nope, just saying thanks.
I was just gonna ask. What is our total, can you remind us of our total budget for roughly? I'm looking through the binder for NLA and NA activity? Like what do we spend on this?
Yeah, so we have about anywhere from ninety-three to a hundred thousand each fiscal year for the neighborhood associations. And that is divided among tax lots, so bigger NAs get more money than the smaller. And then for the NLA specifically, I think we have about six thousand dollars. And that helps us with training. It allows us to buy some shared tools for the neighborhood associations and then I believe that's it.
And then at some stage, I mean, we're going to be talking, or I assume we're possibly talking about some alternative ways to serve neighborhoods. Potentially, maybe, maybe this turns out to, we don't want alternatives, but.
Yeah.
We're looking at alternatives, are there other cities doing the same with the same type of budget? That we're going to be looking at and how, how are you doing out external research or are you planning on it?
Yeah, and that's a great question. I think we have a conference coming up here in May called Neighborhoods USA. And that is always a great avenue for figuring out what other communities are doing. So I'm looking forward to, to seeing where everyone's at after COVID and pandemic and keeping neighborhoods resilient. And so, yeah, I, I'll continue to look into, to different methods that other cities are using. We will have an opportunity, I think, to talk about how we can bridge connections between our community partners, neighborhood associations, and underrepresented groups as well.
What, what? One specific comment that Michaela made that I just want to make sure that, and I was, definitely seemed logical to me. Because when we talk about the assessment that Zavi shared with, with you all, what, what he's doing and what Michaela is doing with neighborhoods. And that theme of more community building events. So events that would actually bring people together, maybe around food or an event in the neighborhood, more than just land use issues. There seem to be some interest, especially kind of emerging from the pandemic that people are really starving for connections. So I, I'd love to hear council's reaction to that theme, kind of coming from both, both assessments.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a, a great idea. But sort of like Anthony was saying, I'm, I'm just wondering, especially this Embold survey, there's, there's a lot in there that really concerns me. That we're not reaching a lot of people in our community right now. And so I am interested to see sort of what could come out of maybe looking at other, other systems. Or if, because if there, if, in other words, if there's too, if we have too far to go, too many changes to make, to make the NAs really truly be representative. Um, you know, I would be interested in, in seeing some other options for a community.
I saw Anne popped on our screen, anything else to add, Anne?
No, I think you said what I was gonna say too is by having these two community relations manager positions that have a little different areas of focus. But having them both work together and find ways to blend their, their projects and their audiences. You know, I think that's one of our long-term goals. Is to, to maybe use some of the funding that is currently slated for neighborhood associations. But in a way that our underrepresented populations are also, you know, drawn to. And, and so that's why I think Zavi and Michaela will work together over the course of the next year to, to kind of use that money in an effective way that. Reaches everybody.
And Council Perkins, I think to your question, the city of Salem has done something similar to kind of what Michaela's. And kind of an alternate, kind of blends like our roles together that I'm really looking into. And I have a meeting with the city of Salem and then a handful of other city of Hillsborough and Hermiston as well. To kind of see like what type of stuff they're doing with their neighborhoods and like their specific outreach. To where again, that's where I think my assessment and Michaela's assessment will really be a nice bridge together. And then also working with parks and their, and building upon their community celebrations events that are again, kind of culturally or demographic specific. And seeing how, because each neighborhood, each NA is already outlined within its own kind of boundary. And figuring out, working with parks where the community or where their, yeah, community park is located. To then again, do alternative outreach, especially kind of moving out of COVID. And as Anne mentioned, kind of utilizing that budget to what Eric mentioned, to kind of have some like food and our community buildings where NAs in that area could then kind of come and do some outreach. And are just going to be there to kind of learn and figure out how we can kind of better this and broaden it.
Love that idea.
Yeah, me too, thanks. Um, yeah, and I think especially the last point about like not just doing outreach, not just saying like, hey, come join us. But actually, um, hearing, you know, listening more and hearing what, what people's concerns are. I think that is a great way to look at using some of the funds rather than just communications out.
Great, well, thank you for that feedback and we'll, we'll keep moving along.
Thank you.
All right, and next item is the home energy score. So this was an element of our Community Climate Action Plan. And given some council decisions around and feedback that we received at the time that that Community Climate Action Plan was adopted. The idea of a home energy score was given some, we wanted to dig in a little bit more. And, and so the Environment Climate Committee has done just that and are, are going to be providing you with a recommendation about how to move forward. So we want to check in with the subcommittee, make sure that council's on track with that recommendation. Or if there's concerns and we can talk about kind of what that process looks like at the end. But we are going to be looking for some direction on this item. I'll turn it over to Cassie to introduce the folks from the ECC.
Okay, thank you. So hi, City Councilors. My name is Cassie Lacy, Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office and Liaison, Liaison to the Environment and Climate Committee. I'm joined by some members of the committee today, so I'll let them introduce themselves. We have Percy first.
Hi, I'm Percy Goodwin.
And then Kavi.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kavi Choxey.
Okay, so we are here to share a recommendation about a home energy score program coming from the ECC. Like Eric said, implementing a home energy score program is part of our Community Climate Action Plan. And it was identified last fall with this, with the Stewardship Subcommittee as one of the top priorities of the ECC to advance during this biennium. So I'm going to share just a quick background on the home energy score before turning it over to the committee members to hear their recommendation. So again, today's goal is to receive feedback from you all on pursuing a required or a voluntary program for a, for home energy score. And then also to receive feedback on any additional considerations or questions that should be addressed as we further develop a program. So first, just some background on what, what a home energy score is. It is a home assessment that explains the energy efficiency of a home through a replicable and affordable methodology that assesses a home's assets. It contains a numeric score that reflects the energy efficiency of a home, estimated utility costs. And it also provides suggested upgrades that a homeowner can make to improve the energy efficiency of their home. So the goals of a program are really to educate homeowners on the energy performance of their homes. And ideally, the downstream impact is that it would motivate people to pursue voluntary energy efficiency projects, which would help reduce our community greenhouse gas emissions. And also, very importantly, a home energy score can provide transparency to home buyers about what the energy cost of a potential home is that they are considering buying. And also just provide information about the makeup of that home, what, what's kind of between the walls that you can't see in an inspection or when you're just reviewing homes. So what several cities in Oregon and elsewhere in the country have done is to require that home energy scores be included as part of a real estate transaction. So when you go to sell your home, the seller would be required to obtain a home energy assessment and include the score as a disclosure right there on the home listing. Excuse me. Portland, Milwaukee, and Hillsborough in Oregon have all created programs with this requirement, as well as some other cities in the nation. And the city of Corvallis is also moving forward with developing a program currently. So this slide shows an example of what the scorecard looks like. This is one from Hillsborough. So you can see on the right side of the slide is kind of the front of the scorecard. It has the energy costs and what the score is. And then on the left side is the, the backside of the scorecard, which shows. What some of those potential improvements that the homeowner can make to improve their score. So the scorecard tool itself was created by the U.S. Department of Energy. They recognized a need to have a standard and replicable way of comparing the energy efficiency of homes. So they spent several years developing this home energy score tool that cities across the country can utilize to create local programs in their community. So when we are saying a home energy score, we are referring to this specific tool that was created and is supported by the USDAO. In Oregon, the Oregon Department of Energy is an active promoter and supporter for Oregon cities to utilize this tool. So they became a partner with the USDAO to act as a proxy partner for Oregon cities. So that Oregon cities can leverage this, this tool without being subject to some of the requirements that ODO, that the USDAO has for using the tool. ODO has also contracted with Earth Advantage, which is a green building nonprofit, to support key services for all the communities in the state who want to pursue a program. So by pursuing a home energy score in Bend, we are really leveraging all this work and these resources that have been committed by the state and federal and state governments to support this. So if the city were to decide to create a home energy score program, the main roles for us would be to develop the policy, which would detail how the program would run. So that would include administrative processes, exemptions, how we want to handle enforcement, low-income assistance, those types of things. And then the implementation phase is fairly light touch, because the actual transactions occur in the private market. So the implementation rules for the city is primarily to enforce the program. And then it's also beneficial to do various outreach and education activities, which look a little bit different at different points in the program. Um, implementing a home energy score is a key action in the energy efficiency portion of the Community Climate Action Plan. It's part of our strategy to implement benchmarking and disclosure programs for energy performance. And then in two thousand and nineteen, the Climate Action Steering Committee originally proposed, when they proposed the C cap, that. Um, they proposed a program that would require a home energy score at the time of listing, similar to how other communities have done. But the councilors at the time weren't in agreement about whether they were comfortable with committing to a mandatory program. So the plan was amended to say we would adopt a home energy score program. And that the next committee would consider both voluntary and mandatory programs. So we actually included language describing that in the resolution, adopting the C cap, which is what's on, on the screen. So when the ECC prioritized a home energy score program for this biennium, we asked them to first do research into whether we should create a voluntary program or a program that requires a score at the time of listing. And so that's why we're coming to you today, is we wanted to check in with you at this point. Because from this point on, whether we pursue a mandatory or a voluntary program, the pathways ahead are quite different. So we want to make sure that the council supports the direction that the committee wants to take, so that we're not spending a bunch of time developing a program that, kind of that fundamental piece. If the council is not in agreement with that. So with that background, I'll turn it over to the committee members to share what their recommendation is and some of their process that went into it.
Thanks, Cassie. So I'll just start by saying that we founded a, a working group and we had a, this is the, the ECC's working group process was, we started by having stakeholder presentations, which included first a presentation from the Environmental Center and also a presentation from the Central Oregon Association of Realtors, to kind of get the two perspectives. One advocating for a mandatory program and one advocating for a voluntary program. We also conducted best practices research, researching other city programs and lessons learned for those programs as well. And then also, some of us also reached out individually to do outreach and follow-up, to learn more from some of the concerns that were sent. I think there were some emails sent to city council and also sent to the ECC as a whole as well. So a few of the lessons learned, and some of these are coming from our board to Portland City Council. And this is a report that was put together thirty months after the program was already in place and that was a mandatory program. So some of the lessons learned is that the cost for the home energy score, and this is seen from various cities, tends to be between a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred dollars. And one of the things we've seen that has been successfully done is there are subsidies for low-income homeowners to address that concern, the cost part of it. The second piece we also found information on was the availability of assessors. So this was another common concern is that would, will we have enough assessors if you're going forward with this program? So the Earth Advantage Help, which is the home energy labeling program, has an impact calculator, which found that Ben needs about an average of ten assessors. And we've also seen other cities kind of do this in a well-planned way, where you can roll it out to ensure little to no disruptions. So that's something we can also anticipate, kind of the next step of this will be planning how to do that. In terms, another concern that we did your was the time for assessment. And we found through our research that typically, typically the time that it takes is, is within a few days, so you can get the home energy assessment. So in Portland, they, as part of their report, they actually called all the companies that do home energy assessments. And they found that seventy percent of the companies they reach could do it the same day or within two, one to two days. So it showed that if you do it, if you're able to roll it out properly, there's not as much of a delay in the process of this. And almost all of the companies could do it within less than a week. And then lastly, one of the other concerns we did kind of fear, especially in the past. uh especially in the past was net, the negative market value impact, especially for homes that are older or may not be as energy efficient. And that's something that we haven't really seen evidence of, especially in all of our research with many of the cities that have already rolled this out for, you know, for a number of years now. And the other thing, uh I know I was personally interested in was to just see the response of this as well from homeowners, um from home buyers. Uh so one of the things this, the Portland also did is do a survey of all the home buyers who bought homes in a home energy assessment score. And they found that two-thirds of respondents, and you know, keeping in mind that people who responded maybe, it may be selective bias, but at least two-thirds of the respondents discussed that the home energy scores um were discussed with their agent as part of the process. So we're seeing that they are being used as part of the home buying process. Sixty-two percent also said they used the report to understand the types of projects they may want to invest in after they purchased a home. So that's in line with what we're trying to see with the home energy score is, is using it to have improvements, especially improvements where it makes sense, where we have a pretty quick return on investment. Um and I, I put in a few quotes there from the survey as well, just kind of showing that many of the home buyers really appreciate having the home energy score. And I'll pass it over to Percy for that.
Thank you, Cavi. Um so at the top here, we have what the entire ECC ultimately voted on for our recommendations. We are recommending a required home energy score program. Um and I can go through some of our justification. So ultimately, we kept coming back to what was the original intent of a home energy score and linking that to the CCAP, really wanting to see the uh carbon reduction. Those goals, an education program really helps to improve that because we're putting it in the hands of the homeowners to um better understand. And typically, homeowners make those improvements within the first couple of years of owning the home. So providing that information at the transaction allows the homeowner to make those educated decisions. Um and really wanting to increase transparency uh and information. You know, I can't stress enough, we're in a time of a climate crisis and home energy score programs feels like an action step we can take. Uh and then we can point to a couple of different cities here. And the difference they solve the voluntary versus mandatory programs. And the numbers just can't be ignored. Uh if we want to have a program, it needs to be required. Otherwise, it doesn't quite exist. Uh it's not having the impact that the intent um has behind the program. You know, we're sensitive to language. I understand the challenge that um that we face um across mandatory versus voluntary. Uh but ultimately, just getting back to the importance of addressing where we're at with the environment and addressing the health and safety of the homes. You know, and really looking at the CCAP goals to increase education and transparency. We ultimately decided that this program does need to be required. So that's our recommendation. And so we're going to wrap up here shortly. We really want to hear from you all. Um what questions or concerns you have moving forward.
And then last, um so some next steps is that if the council agrees with the ECC's recommendation for a required program, the next step would be launching into that policy development phase. So again, that's where we'll determine the, the process and administration of the program and other program customizations. We plan to do some significant community and stakeholder engagement as we develop that program. So I anticipate that we would uh be doing that beginning now or as soon as we can through the fall. And then the goal would be to have a program and policy for you to review in the fall before ultimately adopting an ordinance uh that would establish the program sometime by the end of the year. And then if we hit that timeline, I would anticipate we'd want to launch the program either mid twenty twenty-three with the new biennium, or perhaps we would delay the start until early twenty twenty-four, depending on what we feel is appropriate, um as we kind of look into some of those program customizations. And like I said, the implementation, it really just means enforcement and then kind of making sure that we're supporting the community through um education and information sharing. We think it would be, uh but other cities are seeing a quarter to a half FTE in order to kind of oversee the program, which we think we might be able to combine potentially with some other staffing that we're planning. We'll have to look into that as well. So um for discussion, again, we're really looking for direction. Do you support the home energy score program as recommended by the ECC? And then what concerns and questions uh you would like to be addressed in the policy and program development?
I have a question. This is Megan. Um I saw in the packet that you talked about how um in other cities, the, some realtors are taking, are sort of taking on this work, you know, adding it to their portfolio, being assessors. When you were having conversations with realtors in Central Oregon, is that something that, that they talked about possibly seeing um in order to supply, you know, these assessors in our community?
Yeah, so it's not typically the realtors um who take it up. It's typically, and if I wrote that, that would have, that would have been a misstep. It's typically like appraisers or inspectors, other people that are coming in. You know, and checking some stuff out in a home. The realtors, um you know, it's helpful if they're good stewards by helping their clients kind of obtain the home energy score and the realtor is ultimately responsible for getting it on the listing if you're working with a realtor. But their role is, can be limited to just putting it on the listing. And we do expect that um inspectors, appraisers, the type of people who are doing it in the metro area, we do anticipate that those are the same types of people who would add it to their services here.
Thanks. Well, just to answer the first question on the slide, um I do support uh mandatory home energy score as, as recommended. Um and I don't have any other questions, so. Thank you for this information. It was really helpful for me to understand a little bit of background, what other cities are doing and um and especially, like you said, the, the homeowners respond, or the kind of home buyers responses to it and how it was helpful for people.
I also fully support, especially um with the assistance for low income homeowners.
I don't know exactly, I don't, I'm not sure where I'm at on this at, at this time, just for the reason that I don't think we're doing enough. I mean, this is great. I think in a perfect world, we have to have good information for people about their impact on the climate, but I, I, I need to understand better if this is going to actually have a meaningful impact on carbon emissions when, in my mind, we need to be regulating the construction of housing to make sure that the houses actually have a lower carbon footprint. And I appreciate that that has its own regulatory and jurisdictional challenges. So my concern is that this is great. It's slightly performative and won't have the kinds of impact I think we need to make right away. We, I totally agree with um the committee that we are in a climate crisis. My concern is that this is going to sort of allow people to take their foot off the gas. We're going to spend point five FTE on this and I, I frankly, I'm, I'm still panicked over um not doing enough to mitigate the climate crisis that we're in right now and have um uh a suspicion, which I could be proven incorrect, that point five FTE spent on transportation planning would have a much greater impact. Um and so I've expressed this to some members of the committee. While I appreciate and want us to do as much as possible in terms of home energy scores, we get a lot more bang for our buck um in other areas. I will also add that I actually don't see this as as meaningful from a climate perspective as I do from ensuring that people can stay in their homes. We drastically underestimate um especially here, the costs, the ongoing costs after acquisition or just in addition to rent of how much it costs to stay in your home. And if you um have high energy costs, that is part of what drives people to home insecurity and rent um over burdening. Like if you look at Redmond, they have extremely high um rent over burdens even compared to to Bend. And part of that has to be associated with our energy costs. Um so I mean, at the end of the day, I'm probably going to support this because I think it's kind of a bare minimum of what we need to be doing in this climate emergency, but um I, I don't want it. I don't want, I, I, my hope is that we never get to a point where somebody says council, great idea, but we don't have enough in the budget to get this transportation planning done, or we don't have the FTEs um to get this done in um economic development or somewhere else because this doesn't seem quite as important as the other things that I know we need to do right now to satisfy the obligation we have under the Climate Action Program, the coming obligations we're going to have under implementation of the CFEC rules and um everything we need to do to comply with the TSP um vehicle miles traveled require uh reductions that are going to be even more difficult to comply with after the CFEC rules are passed in their likely current form. So those are my reservations, but um really appreciate the work of the committee and please um take this as at least from one, one person. And I expect that Mayor Pro Tim Goodman Campbell and Perkins agree that we want more and more aggressive um measures to satisfy our obligation to the climate and the environment.
Cassie, was there anything to add in terms of the modeling that was done when the, we developed the Climate Action Plan and the estimates of the, the impact of a home energy score might have on our on our GHD emission production?
Um, yes, it was on, let me see if I can pull it up quickly. It was on the slide on. And it would, of course, be more useful if I could pull it up in comparison to, you know, if we could compare it to some of the other strategies, but the strategy, it was kind of bundled under the strategy about implementing benchmarking and disclosure programs for energy performance. Um it had a million accumulative, uh accumulative emissions reduction potential of a million metric tons of CO2 equivalent, which is one of the higher ones. Um I think it was rated as um a lot of times it was rated as higher than some of like, it was rated higher than our, the estimates for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, just because a lot of times even investing in the bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, like to get mass people to kind of convert to bicycle and pedestrian is harder than getting a lot of, you know, if our homes are more efficient and people don't have to change their behavior, it has a larger greenhouse gas reduction, just kind of by nature of how you can convert it without, oh, it's a little bit less of a behavior change um component. Um and another thing too, I wanted to say on kind of like what the impact of the home energy score specifically is as far as GHD reduction, it is a little bit decoupled from the greenhouse gas reduction because there's the program. But then it has to be followed by people taking a voluntary energy efficiency projects. But I think one of the other opportunities with a home energy score is that it provides us the data to even know like what uh what the efficiency is of our housing stock. That's something that we really don't have any information on. And if we have better data about that, that would also allow us to kind of better do, whether it's other kinds of targeted weatherization support programs or other types of energy efficiency support programs. We'd have the data to be able to do that better and, and be more efficient in the, in the way that we even support energy efficiency.
Thanks, Cassie. That's really helpful. And I, I completely agree with you, Anthony, that we need to be doing more and faster. And I think one of the reasons why I see even, you know, even though I agree, this is like, again, kind of a smaller step than what is needed. Um, I'm a big fan of energy efficiency and conservation and anything that encourages you know, people coming into, especially people coming into this community, um you know, to, to be, who are purchasing a home here to be more efficient, that, that is, is really important because we also, you know, the, I think the biggest carbon reduction emission or carbon emission reduction potential in the plan is the um a hundred percent renewable energy for the city of Bend. That's going to be a really hard one to meet. It's going to be expensive and it's critically important. And if we have less energy needs overall, anything we can do to reduce that, you know, will, will make it a little bit easier to meet that goal. So um that's kind of my thinking is, is not just, you know, is looking at how we use less, how we have less of a footprint. And, and this is a piece of that.
Okay, thank you. I think we have what we need. Um so thank you all for your time and thanks Percy and Cavi. And um we'll likely come back to the stewardship subcommittee later on this year with um a recommendation about what the, the program might look like.
Yeah, thank you all for having us. And um we have a lot more information, you know, Cavi's done a great job of gathering reports. So please reach out if you want to read more into this. Um I agree and just want to reiterate the potential for where this program can take us is what I'm excited about. Where, where this data uh can lead to. You know, someone, if we have someone staff researching this, that's someone who's collecting this information, who can really take this to the next level. That's what I'm about, where this can go. Um so really appreciate you all taking time uh meeting with us today. It's great to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And so we'll move on to our last item, which is a um one of the, the council goal strategies was to remove barriers uh for engagement. Uh we know one of those barriers is just the participation on our many boards, committees, commissions and the, the cost for childcare and um time away from, from work, et cetera. And so we're looking for ways that we can uh implement um a, a stipend program, which you're going to hear about uh in a fairly easy way to account for some of those barriers. So uh with that, I'm going to turn this over to Anna Allen, our Inclusion and Equity, our Equity and Inclusion Director, uh to provide you with an update. And I think what we're looking for is just uh concurrence with uh council that we're moving in the right direction. And if so, I think we, we would take uh some action to the full council uh on this here in the, in the very near future.
Thanks, Eric. Hi, councillors. I'm Anna Allen. Are you she, her pronouns? I'm your Equity and Inclusion Director. Um I think I heard rumblings of a stipend program, like on my first day of coming to the city. Um and it's something that I have worked on in, in the past. I've seen other jurisdictions do. Um and so I was really excited to hear those conversations again, like on my first day walking in the office. From a number of folks at a council level, from councillor Shangleberg, from a committee member, from staff members who were onboarding me, um just from Eric. And so just really hearing a lot of support for this. And I think it's definitely one piece that can really um have an impact on folks' ability to show up um as we lean on them so much. So I'm excited to be here to give an update on this and on behalf of our work group. So I have everybody kind of listed here who has participated in a number of work group sessions. And I'll talk a little bit about, more about that work in a second. Is it, it's not wanting to, let's see. Is it shifting slides at all for you all?
Not yet.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay. So again, this is the council goal that you all have set. Um you know, we wanted to highlight the council goal and that this initiative directly ties to. Um and you all have created that goal uh to set to, to reduce barriers and be an accessible and effective city government. So a couple of those bullet points include expanding opportunities for community members to connect with the city and to lower barriers to engagement and improve access. So one strategy that we came up with, um or again, that has been in conversation, I think, for a while now, is to provide a stipit, stipend to offset those um incurred costs or assumed incurred costs of participating on a city advisory committee or commission. And at the same time, I just think it's important to highlight um that we're implementing a strategy to capture voluntarily demographic information so that we're ensuring that as we're rolling out opportunities to receive a stipend for participation, that we're hopefully also able to capture some of those shifts in um applicants and demographics and who is serving on our committees. So we're also rolling that out um at the same time. So if you go on the website and apply, we, we currently have an opening, several openings for the Human Rights and Equity Commission. So if you were to go on and look at that application process, you'd see um an updated application that includes a couple equity-driven questions. And then you would also, when you come to the end, be able to select yes or no to provide optional demographic information um so that we can better capture that. And there's also a strategy to roll that out with existing advisory committees right now as well. So, you know, there are many ways that the city solicits community input when it comes to policy development and service and services. Um and one of those ways is, one of those channels is through our many, I believe we have fourteen ongoing permanent advisory committees. And so that's a big um channel. And so that's a big, um, channel of communication that we have to community. Um, and folks who serve on those committees provide really critical input and direction to city staff as we move forward with polit, policy decisions that impact them, with services that impact them. And so we really wanted to look at how can we bridge that barrier and what is that barrier? What are the things that are included there? So again, a stipend can offset the expenses incurred by committee members to attend meetings and provide their expertise to the city. Um, and so again, this is just one way to reduce barriers. So I really think that's important. This isn't seen as, this is something that our work group was really talked heavily about is, this is really a symptom of a larger issue. And so we really want to chip away at all of those barriers that exist. But I think this was one that really made sense to start with. Um, so some of those costs include childcare, access to wifi, parking, um, transportation. So really thinking about what are all of those costs? And how can we, um, provide a support to be able to offset those expenses? So this is kind of a process roadmap. Um, early in December, we started convening a stipend work group that included, um, Equity Department representation from councils. So Councilor Schangleberg and I were in constant communication and they attended, um, one of our work group meetings as well. The legal team, HR, finance, um, we had representation from liaisons who support advisory committees. And we had the city recorder as well. Um, and so early on in that process, we began researching other jurisdictions. So, um, really the five that we captured, we captured five jurisdictions across the country. Um, I was able to talk directly with three folks, um, who were responsible for implementing similar programs in their jurisdictions. I've emailed with one and then one jurisdiction did not get back to me. Um, and so we looked at, we were asking questions around the amount that they provide, how they implemented that, how many advisory committees they have. Um, did they see any changes in representation of folks serving or were, were people able to stay longer? So some of those questions were included in that researching phase. And then we had, to date, we've had four work group meetings. Um, and in those work group meetings, we were identifying and working through internal kind of logistical challenges when it came to, we had, there's legal guardrails that we have to work within. Um, we're really looking at trying to figure out what makes the most sense given our current staffing capacity, while also really wanting to support our community members who serve in these positions. Um, we were, we spent some time refining our recommendation. We looked at different distribution practices. Could we do, you know, is it a gift card? Is it a reimbursement with tracking receipts? Is it a cash at, you know, is it a gift card again, or is it the debit card that we can reload? So we really were looking at what are all of the options that we have. I really appreciate our finance team and our legal team just kind of helping to work through all of those, build those barriers to identify a path forward. It was really encouraging. Um, and with that, I will also say I do, I did ask Sharon, um, and Elizabeth to be able to participate, to jump in at any point. If I get any of this wrong, I am no legal expert or finance expert. Um, and so here we're at the point of coming to the stewardship subcommittee to provide an update, kind of share our recommendation to date and solicit any input, um, from the councilors who serve on the stewardship subcommittee. Because there will ultimately be, um, the need for a code change moving forward. Um, so we're, we are tentatively looking at, depending on direction from this group today. Um, we're looking at April 20th as a potential date. I think it'll depend on the code change, which again, I will talk about shortly and Elizabeth will jump in and support me as well. But we're looking at April 20th as a potential date for the first reading for a code change, with the second reading being scheduled for May 4th. And then it would become effective 30 days after that. And another important thing that I will say is the implementation piece. So I think will ultimately happen kind of simultaneously as we're gearing up to train staff members who support, um, advisory committees, make sure that they have what they need, kind of get our internal team, somebody from finance, somebody from legal, somebody from HR, kind of that work group, limiting it down to who are our points of contact that will really be working to implement this program. And we're also currently thinking of this as a pilot because we want to hear from folks, um, after they've been able to participate in this program. And I'll talk about the recommendation in the next couple of slides. But really wanting to hear from folks and look at that demographic information. Did it have an impact on how many applications we received? Did it have an impact on the diversity of the applicants? Did it have an impact, um, on how long someone is, did it get at retention rates, um, anything like that? So we're really wanting to be intentional about that kind of, um, review process at the one-year mark is what we're currently thinking. So after we implement, then we'll go ahead and be doing that review at a one-year mark and adjust course as needed, um, depending on what the feedback is, and then also provide an update to council. So council action, before we move into the recommendation, just wanted to capture that there is a need for council action. So Elizabeth, again, feel free to jump in and cut me off at any point. Um, so the current code reads, and I can't see all of this because my screen is in the way. But, um, all board, commission and committee members shall serve without compensation. So, um, this is not compensation. I just want to be clear about that. This is stipend really is to address the assumed incurred costs that any member, um, accrues when serving on a committee member. You know, for example, on nights that I support the Human Rights and Equity Commission meeting, I pay my neighbor to watch my one-year-olds and I just go drop her off and then I go pick her up because my daycare doesn't, isn't open that late. And so that's not an available option for me and I'm a staff member. So I think just wanting to highlight that these are real costs that people have. Um, even being in a hybrid option, folks are traveling to stable wifi connections, right? And so really thinking about, um, how we're implementing this. And I'll talk a little bit more about rationale in the next, in the next slide. But councils really, we're at a point now where, um, in addition to some feedback around the recommendation, we want to know what council's preference is moving forward with a code change. And again, this will impact the timeline of implementation, um, depending on how, on the depth that you all want to go with this policy. So, um, there's option A, council could adopt a code change, um, providing that while committee members are serving as, they do serve as volunteers, they may receive a nominal stipend to cover expenses of attending meetings, um, through a program established by staff. This would be the work group recommendation because it allows flexibility for staff and the work group, um, when it comes to implementing, um, any sort of method of stipend and expanding, um, to other committees. So ad hoc committees, because I think right now the recommendation is that we, we work with, uh, that we implement this program in, um, established, ongoing, permanent committees with that one-year annual review, looking at expanding to ad hoc and other committees. So again, this was just really the, the, the one with greater flexibility in case we need to course correct throughout. Um, and when that, the end of that, um, review timeline, that measurement comes and we can go ahead and make decisions, um, at a staff level. Or there's B, council could adopt a code change that sets the terms of a stipend, um, program with, for committee members. So you all could really outline the amount, um, and any further kind of policy pieces that you want to outline in that, um, which could provide further protection from future councils. But those are kind of the two options that we're looking at right now. And I'm going to pause and just ask Elizabeth if, um, if you have any input here for feedback.
Thanks, Anna. Good afternoon, council. Um, this slide is just to show you what the council action would be, um, and to take a, take a pause and just, you know, this conversation is happening within our current, um, framework where committee members are serving as volunteers without compensation. And so this conversation isn't changing that. Um, but there is some code language to allow for implementation of, um, expense reimbursement or a nominal fee. Um, but staying within that box of, of committee members serving as volunteers. Um, and you know, the option is your, you know, your council compensation is laid out in the code. Um, and so you have the option of setting an amount or some program guidelines within the code or, um, a simpler code change, which would, um, allow staff to come up with, um, those types of details.
Thanks, Elizabeth. So I'm going to move on to the actual recommendation and there's only a couple of slides left, just so councilors know that, um, we'll get to questions soon. So the work group, um, has a current recommendation of providing $30 to $40 per meeting. Um, and that includes regular and subcommittee meetings. I think, you know, from an equity perspective, we really wanted to have a range and this range really reflects a number of things. We looked at, you know, what, again, what other jurisdictions are doing, what amounts do they provide? I found $30 to be the, the lowest amount of other jurisdictions and $50 being the highest. But we also wanted to weigh in a couple of other things. So we looked at the state standard or, um, childcare rates. We also approximated kind of travel, travel costs. So looking at an assumed travel cost, given the current, uh, 60 cents per mile reimbursement rate, and assuming that someone would be traveling from one side of the city to the other. So really looking at that mileage and figuring, um, that including the cost of parking. And so those are just some elements that we really looked at of what are some incurred costs that folks can, can get when, when you're participating and volunteering your time. Um, so given that, I think where we came with, we felt $30 to $40 was an appropriate range for, for council consideration for a stipend. The annual cost cannot exceed $500 per year, and that's to maintain, um, the volunteer liability protection. And Elizabeth, feel free to jump in on anything about that, um, or especially if council has questions. And so we're really looked at an annual cost of around $63,000. And the rationale behind this is that we have, currently have 14 permanent committees, averaging about nine people per committee. Some have 12, some have seven, um, and then assuming that nobody will opt out. Um, and so again, in the next slide, I'll talk about kind of the opt-out, um, strategy. And so which committees, at this time, we're recommending permanent committees only to start. And then after that one-year evaluation, consider adding temporary or ad hoc committees. Disbursement, um, we, again, after really taking some time to figure out, do we want to distribute gift cards? Is it cash? Um, is it debit cards? Is it that are reloadable or non-reloadable, one-time use only? Is it a mailed check? So really looking at what other jurisdictions are doing and what makes sense for community members here as well for, as staffing capacity. So our recommendation is to provide cash cards provided at each meeting or mailed monthly or quarterly. Um, and then there's all, and also having an option if requested by a committee member to mail a check. And the opt-out option, so we really, after meeting with folks and having conversations with multiple staff members who support advisory committees, really felt like we wanted to remove stigma. Um, and we wanted to really, really provide this to everybody that currently serves and will be appointed to any, um, advisory committee moving forward, but offering an opt-out option. So really in onboarding, the vision is that in onboarding or giving, given this extra information, you're working with myself or whoever it is that you're working with, um, on, on your advisory committee as your staff liaison to fill out the appropriate information, um, so that you can start receiving that stipend. So it's really presented as you receive a stipend for, for your participation in this group. But you have the opportunity to opt out. So you can self-opt out if you feel like, I don't really, I mean, you know, my kids are out of the house or I don't have children and I'm not really, don't really, and I live across the street from City Hall. So I just walk over there for my meeting, whatever those reasons are. Um, someone can easily just self-select out of the program. And we're to the questions part. So I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing and open it up for questions.
Elizabeth, what's volunteer liability protection?
Thank you, Councilor Perkins. That's a federal act that is, uh, liability protection for acts, um, undertaken by volunteers during the course of their volunteer service. Um, and that act has a $500 cap for when that, um, those protections cease to apply.
So I was doing the math and it seemed, it seems like to get, stay under that 500, even assuming it was at the high end of that range, that still is one meeting a month, right? That you could, that you could give someone a stipend for, which, which.
Yes, right, right. And, and remember, this is, you know, compensation for expenses incurred. This isn't compensation for time spent. Um, so it's really looking at what are those expenses? And so if you had a monthly meeting, um, and assuming we went with that higher level, that would be one, one per month.
I will say too, I think this is a great point to, to bring up is, you know, someone participating in a monthly meeting, um, will hit about $480 annually if they just participate in those 12 meetings. Sometimes often committees have 11 meetings because they take one off in the summer. Um, many committees do have subcommittees and so there will be folks who serve on both. And so they will hit that annual cap, um, that ceiling at about six months. Um, and so really thinking about that, we talked a lot about a reimbursement strategy, which really gets into like collecting receipts and a lot more, um, staff time and also time for community members to be collecting those things, hanging on to your parking receipt. You have to turn it in. So are you mailing it in? Are you in person? So really looking at that too. And again, I think that's what helped us lean towards wanting to do this as a pilot program where we can do that evaluation at the end of the year. And we can look at the data and see who hit that ceiling really quickly. And maybe they served, I mean, Human Rights and Equity Commission had two subcommittees at one point. And there were, was a couple of members that served on all. So they were doing three meetings a month. Um, and so really thinking about that, we also have some committees that, um, shared that they don't even typically have 12 meetings a year. And so I think it really that will, in, it'll inform us at that one-year mark when we look at the data of who hit the ceiling, who didn't, how many people, um, did it reduce barriers? The people self-selected that, that did reduce barriers for them. And so really being able to kind of adjust course at that point.
Any other questions or, uh, feedback on, on the direction that you heard from Anna, the recommendation from the work group?
I'm all for it, Anna. I mean, I think, um, this was like a campaign promise that I think some of us made to push this. So I'm excited that it's happening. The other thing is, um, I've been talking to this group called Politicit. Politicit, I think is how you describe it. I'll send you the information. But it might be a way to, since some of us on this call, I think the three councilors all struggle with childcare for our meetings twice a month. Um, I'm acutely aware how, uh, challenging that can be. And I can't imagine even for people who don't have that built into their, um, you know, their committee work. So if we can augment some of the, especially childcare support with outside organizations who are already set up to do that, maybe it would let us focus on, um, using our resources for the, you know, mileage and things like that. But I'll send that to you. And I think this is a great idea. And even if it doesn't show like engagement right away, I think sending the message of this being, um, a local government open to and including all is super important. And I'm confident in the long run it will, um, turn out to be that. So thanks for all this and excited to see the next steps.
Thank you, Councilor Prudman.
Yeah, I'll just say I, I definitely support this as well. And, um, I think it'd support the recommendation of option A. Um, not just because I don't think we need to get into, council doesn't need to get into the details. Um, and I definitely trust staff that, that you have more information and insight into this than I do. Uh, but also just that, that then we'll keep that flexibility. We won't have to go back and change our code. If we learn something in the evaluation in the pilot program over the course of a year that we want to make a tweak, we won't have to, um, go back and, and change code to do that. So.
I'm also all in favor, 100% option A. And I, I just think that this really shows, um, that we value, um, and honor, you know, the, the people that are, that are committing, you know, so much of their time to our city and our city's wellbeing. So I'm really excited. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And I think I should share that our goal, we're like fingers crossed. Hopefully we can start implementing this in June. We were talking about June or July. And so we're really hopeful for June. Um, I think now that we have direction going forward with option A, that that will make the code change much quicker. Um, so we can stick to that April, late April and early May, um, council meetings to be able to do that. Uh, and then start that rollout process. And the feedback internally from liaisons who staff advisory committees has just been really encouraging and amazing. And they just want to make it happen sooner rather than later. They want, they're like, I'll do it all monthly. If I have to fill out attendance and paperwork, just tell me what I have to do. I want to do it. And so it's just been really encouraging and amazing to work with this team, um, to be able to, to address this barrier. So I'm really looking forward to next steps.
All right. Well, thank you, Anna, and thank you, council. Um, we will adjourn today's meeting. That was the end of our, our topics. Thank you for, uh, meeting over the lunch hour. Um, we will have our next meeting, uh, we, we are going to, we're on a monthly schedule right now. I think we like to get back to the every other month, but right now just there's some, um, the work is really driving our need to meet. We need to, uh, begin sketching out our framework plan for our next distribution of ARPA dollars. So remember, we had the first $7 million in the. So remember we had the first $7 million in the plan that we developed. Um, so the next seven million, uh, will be allocated in May. And so we want to, uh, spend our meeting in April, um, sketching out what that looks like. And I, there's a couple of other items that I'm not recalling that are, I'm sure will be added to that agenda, but that's, that's the main, the main course. So. All right. And with that, I think we're ready to adjourn. Anything else, Mickey? Okay, great.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.